Call the order of the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee. Roll call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
Here.
Alderman Curielli?
Here.
Chairman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Sosmorsky?
Here.
Alderman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Here.
Alderman Catalin?
Here.
It looks like we do have a quorum. Okay, next I need approval of the minutes of October 26, 2023.
Motion.
Sorry.
Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next is report and recommendation zoning regulation for recreational cannabis dispensaries. Do we have a brief presentation?
We do.
All right. Take it away.
All right, so based on direction from the council back in October last year, we have been working towards preparing a text amendment to allow cannabis abuses in the city. And we have completed our research. We have been looking at model ordinance and we have prepared a draft of a text amendment that will be reviewed by the city attorney and then would go to the community development. However, before we finalize that, we did have a couple of questions we wanted to confirm with the council before moving forward. And so we just have five simple questions that I wanted to cover this evening. And so the first question here is should cannabis dispensaries be allowed as a permitted use or a special use? Now, my impression from the conversation was that we wanted the process to be smooth and quicker than maybe some other communities. And therefore permitted use is what is desired. That is what we're showing here. However, we wanted to make sure the council was aware that right now medical uses in the city are special use and wanted to make sure that that doesn't change anything and that everyone is still on board with having it be a permitted use.
Alderman Woods?
That is an actual question to me, permitted use. And before we go further, I would, on that same line, try to keep everything simple so we don't overcomplicate this process. And tend to believe the best approach to that would be to parallel what we use for liquor licenses. And then our control will be the, just like the liquor license, the number of licenses approved. So those people wanting to come in are not going to be confronted with all these obstacles to getting it done and hopefully we get some good penance in. And the other thing, as we were talking, I don't know if we decided, are we, you know, I think it's one of the things we should decide, are we going to open up originally one license or two licenses?
Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, a question on that. So, and I was along the same lines, basically treated like the liquor license. But, so, we permit it. But if we have nobody request, then there's no license, right? So we want to make sure, because if we put one out there that's permitted, we're going to get anybody and everybody, oh, you know what, I can do that. And I'm going to open up a shop. And they've probably never done one. I'll be honest with you, since this has come up, I've been going to some of these places, even though I never smoked in my life.
You never got that, no?
Oh, no, no, no. You didn't inhale?
The last meeting.
You didn't inhale? You have to show your license and they've got you registered to get in. Some places look a little more shady than others and I'm like, wow, okay, I hope we don't get one like this. And I've seen where the windows are wide open, where you can look right inside, which is probably better for the police department than the ones that have the frosted glass and you don't know what's going on in there. But I think we should do it by request instead of just opening one up to, first guy's going to run in, boom, I put my business license in. I don't know anything about that stuff. I would be lousy at that. So, I mean...
Well, it sounds like you're getting better though with all of this.
Yeah. That's, they're like, what do you want? I'm like, no, no, I don't even smoke, man. I'm just doing research.
So you got the gummies? You got the edibles instead?
No, I didn't get no edibles.
Did you have to show them your license?
You have to show your driver's license to get in, so...
That means you're on record now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Hmm? No, no, anyways, let's get back to, yeah. My point is, I would, just like this evening, we have a request for a liquor license, let it come like that and then we can open up the first one. If the first one is somebody who's already in the business, and that's what I'd like to see, just to be safe. Because otherwise, anybody can, oh, they got one like, boom. I'm okay with having them come forward.
But they also have to be regulated by the state of Illinois, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
They need a license from the state before we...
Right. Alderman Sosmorsky, you had a question?
Fritos before we finish?
No, I don't have my own cheese.
Go ahead.
I thought we, it's a piggyback off Alderman Woods. I'm pretty sure we already had this discussion. We decided on one license and one license only for now. And...
Mayor, go ahead.
Well, we said we would start with one, but again, if we just open it right from the get-go, anybody in town could say, hey, I'm going to open up a business, right? Who's of age and can get something from the state or whatever they got to do. It'd be better to have them request and tell us, say, we do have another business, this will be our second location or whatever, something.
Alderman Woods?
So, I agree. So that parallels liquor license, so we'll let you request.
Go ahead.
But one point is, you brought up is a good one, you could get somebody to come in and want to put up, you know, one that looks like one of the smoke shops on Irving, which we don't want. Does it make, this is for the director, do we want a minimum square footage? The place has to be a certain size? Any other parameters that we could add that make sense without making it to, most of the places I've seen are bigger, at least 2,000 square feet on the small side and probably close to 5,000 on the larger side.
Go ahead, Dirk.
In order to close out, maybe the first question related to the liquor license, maybe Attorney Bond can add some information. But I understand was we would treat it just like a liquor license, there's none available until somebody presents. And if the liquor commissioner or I don't know what game we're going to give to this...
Drugs are...
Drugs are...
Yeah, the person felt that what was being proposed was appropriate, then they would grant that one. And if somebody else wanted to propose, they'd ask for a question. Attorney Bond?
Yeah, just for a process then, if you, if that's the consensus, I think you've got a number of questions, you know, get a consensus if that is how you want to proceed is in the same fashion as the liquor licenses. And that makes sense because you could regulate them, you can regulate the number, and then there's some other questions that have to be asked as to what are the conditions, to your point, you know, where are they going to be located? Do you want to have distances between them and sensitive, you know, daycares, things of that nature? But if, you should start, you know, kind of, so staff has direction when the final draft of the ordinance comes back to you, that A, is that the way to do it? And if that's the case, then what conditions would be put on it? Is that going to include, you know, the cultivation as well? And then some of the things, you know, what size do, you know, limitations do you want to put? And the location? But I think it would be helpful to, otherwise you're talking about a bunch of different components that you may have direction on how it's going to proceed.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, going to location, again, I think the same as the liquor license.
Mayor?
So, could we just, let's answer the first question.
All right.
Do we want to go to permitted use and then I think locations and stuff is the next?
I thought we already agreed that...
Are we doing roll call?
Well, do, should we need a consensus?
Just show a consensus, see if there's any opposition.
No opposition?
To being a permitted use, right?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Alderman Jacob?
One question, you had mentioned the medicinal ones are different, they're a different use right now?
So currently, back when the law was originally adopted, the community would have to allow medical uses. So we did adopt a text amendment, so there is, there are provisions existing in the UDO which provide for medical cannabis. And at that time, the mindset of the council was, let's, you know, this is something we want to be careful about, we don't want anything bad, and so therefore they made special uses longer drawn out process. But mostly now, all the businesses that are opening have both medical and recreational cannabis, so that's why we want to change it from special use to permitted use.
Alderman Jacob? Yeah, question for the attorney was, so will this automatically make the, just the medicinal ones only be a permitted use?
No, they're still going to, you've got that in the UDO, they've already got, that's a separate, under the Compassionate Use of Cannabis Act, that's separately recognized. And as Director Springer said, you are obligated, mandated to do it. You're not mandated to do the recreational. If you want to do the recreational, you can provide different rules for that. And if you have it in the UDO and you want to make any changes to some of the conditions that you impose, now you've got to go through the process with the text amendment and that's a delay. If you've got some unique use that wants to come in for a, one of the dispensaries and that's not something that was part of the conditions that you, you as a council had determined for the mayor's consideration as the drugs are, you'd have to go back before you could have that approved, you'd have to go back to the UDO and go through the process with the public notice and so forth. So that does maintain its independence, but in today's era, there's not a lot of standalone medical marijuana facilities.
Alderman Messina, you had a...
Yeah, I would, I guess you kind of said it, I would, I would hope that we would just keep it as a special use. Everything's got a workaround, I'm not sure how prevalent it is, chief, but like, people obviously in the state complain about the taxes. And I think with medicinal, there's some advantages, so I don't know if there's a workaround, some genius is going to put it up as a medicinal one and then maybe they're the lowest person in town or something. So I'd like to see that as a special use still, continue as a special use.
Mayor?
Yeah, so, what I just heard by the attorney, so if we grant this license to this dispensary, can he automatically handle the medicinal purposes as well without going to CDC? Could that be added into the, because we've given him the okay on recreational, so why wouldn't we give him the okay on medical?
Go ahead, Dirk.
The, most, there's nobody in the business right now that's just opening medical. And so they're opening recreational and medical. So if we make medical a special use and have recreational as permitted, then we're basically, they've got to go through a special use permit to open their business, so...
That's not... But it works with a, if you have a medical card and you go to any dispensary, if they have a medical card, they're going to give you those prices, right? That's the way that works. Good. Mayor?
Yeah, but if we're going to allow a license for the regular recreational, I don't see any reason why we can't add some language that if you're given the license, that you are also allowed the medical, right? Mr. Bond, I mean, this is a legal question, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Can you explain?
Yeah, they're going to do participate in both, and I don't think anybody's going to stay as exclusively a medical marijuana cannabis.
No, that's...
But if they're going to have both, somebody comes in or the ones that are there, is that what's...
No, no.
It has to be special use for the medical side.
So, what I'm asking is, somebody's going to, like this letter, I'm going to read it, and we approve one, so they're approved for recreational, that automatically should give them the okay for medical.
Right.
Without going to CDC, there's got, I'm sure there's going to have to be some language to put in so the recreational guy could also sell the medical without going to CDC.
So the way you address that would be as the staff's proposing on the screen, to make them all permitted uses, the ultimate control is in the issuance of the license.
Oh, so it would be, okay, separate, so we make, so we make everything permitted, but again, even the medical ones have to come to us. But the medical ones before, I thought, had to do something else, is that I...
Previously, what we're proposing is that we change everything to a permitted use.
So it's not like...
Go ahead.
It's not like somebody, now these smoke shops, oh, well, we're just going to sell medical because it's permitted, we're already a smoke shop. Are we covered? That's all I'm asking.
Go ahead.
Let me...
Go ahead.
Yes, the, yeah, because what you're doing is, if you concur, then you're going to take those and if they're doing those, it'll be approved in the same fashion. It would be a permitted use and it would be approved in the same fashion as the, strictly with the recreational, which is going to be the bulk of it, I don't think you're having any...
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, before we move on to question number two, there was a question about limitations on the use itself. We will, we reviewed what the Illinois municipal league has put together as kind of a form suggested ordinance, we reviewed the state statute, the law itself, and other communities. And we have a list of things that is proposed for a UDO amendment that would put some limitations and I won't go through all of them, but it's things like, you know, drive-through, no window sales, that, all the sales have to be within an enclosed building, there's no sidewalk sales. The, you can't put on your signs the words marijuana, cannabis, or show cannabis leaves. So there's a lot of things in here that will be considered by the CDC, they'll see that when it comes forward to the PCD for after it's been to the public. Second question related to cultivation centers, those are the growing areas. Previously, we had, we had allowed it as a special use for medical. Now, we are not able to prohibit the medical cultivation centers, we can prohibit recreational cultivation centers. Now, keeping in mind, really no one is doing just medical because recreational is where the money is. And so if some, nobody's going to open a medical cultivation center. But they would open a medical and recreational, and the city does have the ability to prohibit recreational cultivation centers. They're basically can't plant and grow houses and there are orders associated with that. We wanted to confirm that the council would like us to prohibit the cultivation centers for recreational, which is what we are suggesting.
Okay, go ahead. Alderman Messina?
Seems like we all talked to either Pat or Sean, but just to confirm, there's no additional tax or benefits to the city by doing that, right?
We, I did talk to Attorney Conway and he did some research and there's no tax benefits, no additional benefits for those types of uses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, continue.
The third question is, should dispensaries be located in all commercial and industrial districts? Specifically, I wanted to call to council's attention the C3 district on Potter Street. Seems to be a little bit different from all of the other roads that are adjacent to industrial and commercial. Potter Street does have single-family residential across the street. And before we went ahead and allowed it as a permitted use in all districts, I wanted to see if, how the council felt about the C3 Potter Street.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, that was one that we talked about, we asked for an overlay map and we would definitely want, request that it be excluded. There is a park at the east corner, northeast corner of that box, of that square there, yep. So we would, we were requesting that C3 be part of that.
Excluded.
Excluded, thank you. Good.
C3 in total, is that the only C3 or just Potter Street?
It is the only C3 in the city, so we could just say that it's not allowed as a permitted or special use in C3 and with addressing.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Randy Bries?
Uh-huh. The fourth is related to buffers. What we are proposing is that there be no cannabis dispensaries within 1,000 feet of schools. We have placed the schools themselves on the map along with a 1,000-foot buffer area. As you can see, this would be the area that cannabis sales would not be allowed in. And we just wanted to confirm that the city council was on board with this and if it should apply to any other uses.
Mayor, you had a question?
Yeah, so other than the schools, you've got churches, some daycares, right? Couple of daycares. What is it, 1,000 feet is, is general, is the standard? Or 1,200, whatever? But I think churches and whatever, some type of nursery of some kind, I guess, I would like to see.
So I do have some maps that show that the more uses we include as restricted, the less area we have available, it starts to block out portions of, in this case Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road if we did parks. If we did daycares, we knock out a pretty significant, oops, sorry, area of, again, Irving Park Road. And that's ones that have an actual, I believe, commercial location. This isn't home daycares, we start to get into home daycares, it will knock out even further. If we do it with churches, we lose quite a few more lots. So the reason we were suggesting the schools only was to allow the greatest amount of land area to be available.
Alderman Woods, you had a question?
Yeah. What is it for alcohol, for liquor shortage or bars?
I think it's, it might be, I had this in another community, it is not a great distance, it's something like 100 or 500 feet.
500, it's based on my point of view. Mr. Bond, do you?
I think, look, I think it's 250, but I'll go check.
So I'm on the same line with the school thing, and we have to remember that, nope, you're not smoking there, it's just that you're picking up a product and leaving. So some of the things that are associated with fires aren't going to happen here because there's no on-premise participation or consumption. Now, it's just a stop and go, if you will. So I, we start getting, we're creating the obstacles again, we might as well not do it at all for the white house and only leave one block, one location.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, that was part of the question I had, maybe a question for Attorney Bond. It's kind of a dumb question, I guess, but being that it's a permitted use and treating it like a liquor license, when that applicant eventually comes forward, can we then restrict and ask those questions about buffer zones or are we not, if we, are we not allowed at that point?
Go ahead, Ben.
The answer is 100 feet from any church, school, other institution, or higher, learning hospital, home for the age of indigent, indigenous person, veterans, spouses, children, so for alcohol. With respect to that, my, you can, by law, you can impose time, place, manner restrictions, you can limit the number, you can limit the distance between establishments and you have other locations. So my recommendation, so you don't get criticized, is you establish what those are in, you know, at the outset and include those in the code, that you've got, you've got certain general parameters. And then that gives a criteria when the, whatever his name's going to be, the drugs are, evaluates those or you as council evaluate whether or not to increase the number of those, you can look and say, does, what they've put in the application or their request, does it match our criteria? And so that way you're not picking losers and winners of losers, nor does somebody come in and you say, well, you discriminated against me because I'm this, that, or the other and gave it to someone else. That way you've got an objective, uniform standard. You don't want to be too particular, but you've got enough there, so you can have a discussion, is this something we want to do to increase the number of them given our criteria? But that would not be done on a case-by-case basis, that would open us up to possible...
And follow up?
When you say the general, you mean like, I think you said the who, what, when, just the vague, like we restrict the right to ask the who, what, when, but not be as specific where we would narrow our funnel, people that might potentially come forward? Okay.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I think off the top of my head, as opposed to putting rings around every building, that we, I'm okay with 1,000 feet from the school. And the next thing that I would add is that you can't be within whatever number we want to come up with, 3,000 feet of another dispensary. So that would wipe out, that would in itself wipe out a lot of locations, which is one of the things I think that we would want to do, right? We don't want 10 of them. So technically, you'd probably only be able to put two on Irving because they have to be 3,000 feet apart. Or whatever number, I don't know what the number is, I'm just saying.
Mayor?
So maybe, okay, 1,000 feet around the schools and churches and nurseries or whatever, 250 feet, it's 100, what is it, 100 there? So I mean, that should be, that should considerably, right?
No?
I would respectfully try to make that number even, so it doesn't look like I'm grading that school is more important than the church and a church is more important than a...
You're right.
...daycare center, that sounds like we're picking and choosing winners and...
Losers.
Yeah.
Then we still have the industrial area that's available, so...
That's what I'm saying, that allowing one and then increasing the area or distance, they have to be away from each other to wipe out most of the things we're talking about anyway. And the chief, the second objective, and that's not to have 10 of them proliferate on Irving Park Road. I mean, I would imagine, in my head, the most I would want to see in Wooddale would be two. I don't see a time when we'd want more than that, otherwise they look like the smoke shops that were all really...
Alderman Messina, you had a question?
I, no, I didn't think about it until you said it and it made me think of another town. So a town southwest Michigan has a Little's Block where there's four of them all next to each other on that block. And now the other town is like, whoa, we didn't account for that. And so now they have a hotel that converted to dispensary and they have another one across the street, and so they're having that problem. So thinking ahead to that, that would be a huge, to me, it's probably even a better, bigger consideration than the others.
Director?
I did want to mention that we haven't seen that yet here.
Yeah.
The Schaumburg has the most at three. I know we do have a large industrial area, but almost all of these businesses are left now located in commercial areas on our material roads. If you take a look at the research of where they're located, there's only one existing in industrial, all the rest are moved to commercial areas. Again, the liquor license kind of format will allow the ultimate control, we only want one and we don't want three. The only issue that I see if you're putting a maximum, a minimum distance between each other is depending on where, let's say on Irving Park Road that locates, it may knock out the ability to even have a second one. And it doesn't look like municipalities are, you know, fighting them off with a stick. So, just some additional points.
With the report that you did, do we have any revenue figures from these towns, how much they've collected as far as taxes?
I know, I'll find it, it's director has reached out to a couple of the other communities. Obviously, that's proprietary information and they were unable to share exact numbers. But, you know, it's, the, I can just say the municipalities were pleased with the rest, that's right.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just to follow up on the same distance, we can reduce that to 3,000, whatever. But the other thing I think that does is offers whoever the next person or the new dispensary coming in affords them a little protection. And that might get us a better dispensary, if you will, because they know they're going to be protected somewhat because of the distance. I think that's another side, independent benefit, I guess, from doing something like that too, so that we don't get the smaller ones. If we're going to get one, I think we want a nicer one that's going to generate revenue and...
Alderman Messina?
To round up that thought, like right now, playing field's naive, right? It's no secret that people are just, if you're desperate, you get it here, but otherwise they're going to Michigan. That's why my son home is so popular, not for me, because the dispensaries are cheap there, because it's in Michigan. And in Indiana, same thing. So my point is, like if Illinois gets smart at some point and says, our rate, our tax rate is axed, but we want to start getting more... rate's axed, but we want to start getting more revenue, maybe we'll drop it to be more competitive with our neighboring states, then we might have that problem of a two on a street, three on a street, oh god, what are we going to do? Right now, to your point, they're not, they're not attracted to us for now, because if, but if they change, the state changes the rules, they might be, people just go out of necessity, out of state, kind of like for cigarettes, if they're desperate and they want to save money.
Alden Jacob?
But, I mean, realistically, ultimately, we're making a decision, just like a liquor license, so if we're in control of how many we could have, I mean, I don't even know if you need to have those, all that criteria, except for the schools.
Mayor? So, just listening, so just we're leaving it to the schools, thousands, 1,000 feet, and we're okay with that because we control the licenses anyways. I mean, I'm okay with that. Unless, if I add 1,500 feet between spans, I'm okay with that, too, but.
Again, if you wanted to add in all the other buildings and make that 250 feet, that's more workable, so there's a consistency to it. Because I'm assuming that if one came to us and wanted to open up right next door to a daycare center, we wouldn't want to do that.
Right.
But that would still be within the rules. So that's what I'm saying, whatever number we pick, it probably should be a smaller number, and off the top of my head, 250 feet, seeming like a more realistic number or workable number.
Attorney Bond, do you have a question?
Yeah, and remember, the same thing with the liquor licenses, if you say, you know, without having some of the specifics, you can just evaluate it and as a council say, we don't think we need another one either in that general area or that, so you would just not increase the number that's available for the issues.
Alden Woods, Ames?
Thank you. So what I'm hearing is if a potential business comes forward to the city and wants to open, they're asking permission to be a business in Wooddale, and do they have a location at that time? Because then we could initially say that's not a good spot for it. So it could be denied at that point or accepted, because they'll have.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, it would be very similar to when the mayor gets a request for a liquor license, where they are going to locate that, they may not have, they have a location, they may not have a lease on the door, they may not, you know, yet own it, you know, but because they're seeing if they would be permitted and put there. And then also what they used, what they're going to do. So they have to give us an idea, what's the, how big is it going to be, you know, and what are some of their criteria? So, but, and then they would submit that. So you would have their criteria and see if it matches the criteria you want to apply to increase the number.
Director?
Another point of consideration is the daycares. Let's say a business opens, a cannabis business, and then three doors down, a daycare afterwards opens, that means that if we have some sort of distance limitation and a person wants to sell the business or close and have a new cannabis open up there, they wouldn't be able to because they'd be too close to a business that just moved in. So again, it's, I'm happy to put in whatever buffer, but I just want to make sure everybody's kind of considering.
Jacob?
Yeah, so since we're treating this like a liquor license, why don't we just mirror the liquor license with 100, what did you say, Pat, 100 feet?
We don't have that.
He said, oh, John.
Oh, that's not our town, that's other towns? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you had said we had it.
Alden Woods?
Just to take this back, it sounds like we just keep it vague, we get the ability to add as we see fit, and if we start putting all these, let's keep it vague to allow as many, to be as attractive as possible, but we ultimately have the ability to say no based on these other criterias later or make recommendations, instead of just pushing people away. Does that sound accurate?
Alden Woods, Ames?
So on that note, keeping it attractive for businesses to look at Wooddale, if, you know, this passes and everything goes through, how do we let businesses know that, you know, Wooddale is available? Like, is there a director? Like, how do people find out?
High times call location.
Director?
Drugs are.
That is a very good question, and Alden Ames did reach out and ask me that question. We did some research on it in advance, and actually, there is no state list. I was hoping we would be able to get on a state list that says this is what the current is. There are some lists out there that were initially published back in 2019 and 2020 when this was first coming on, but it has not been kept up to date. What we have found is that most municipalities put that in queues on their website so that people that are looking can just go. We did find one or two lists that we can contact them and say, hey, here's a copy of our ordinance, we just adopted it just for your information for your readers, you know, type of thing. But there is no official director.
Mayor, you got a question?
So, to answer the question, are we good with 1,000 feet from the schools? So we can go to the next question, or?
I thought we were going to vary the liquor license. Was the last, but now that offers?
No, just the schools. Right, that was the question, for the schools.
Staff is recommending 1,000 feet buffer around the schools, and the question was, should it apply to any other uses?
Right, so there would be a no, unless I'm hearing no on even the schools.
I'm okay with the schools.
Good. Continue.
Last question. Should onsite consumption be permitted or prohibited?
Prohibited.
Prohibited. See if I can grab a 1,000 foot, if it's a one.
Correct.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, I think that's the end of the input, the questions that they have. It might be worthwhile, so there's a clear direction on each of those, they can entertain a motion as to that, so that staff has clear direction. Now that you've got a consensus, I don't think, I think we're going to have the same page, just so it's clear. And just entertain a motion on the, you know, five questions that the council just went through analyzing.
So anybody want to make a motion on that? Go ahead, Alden Woods?
I'll take a stab at it, there was five things, Ben.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve legalization of marijuana dispensaries within the borders.
The fact questions are in.
Oh. Within the borders of Wooddale, recreational and medical? Remember saying, or just recreational and medical? Where, are we talking about the cultivation centers, if the same?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just suggest do each of those questions and get a consensus on that, and then that gives staff clear direction as to where we go. First, I'll do each one individually, that's what I recommend.
Oh, it's a motion.
I'll make a motion to legalize cannabis issuance of licenses for cannabis dispensaries within the city of Wooddale.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. I just want to clarify because we need to make sure it's rightfully presented to CDC that that will then change the medical to also be permitted.
Okay, so the medical and recreational be allowed as permitted uses within the city of Wooddale? That covered it. Okay, are we voting on that individually?
We can do it all in favor.
All in favor?
See?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, at any, at any, everybody's.
Oh, no.
Everybody's.
One extension.
Yeah.
Down with the other one.
No, it's correct.
Two, should the city allow, make a motion to not allow cultivation centers, cannabis cultivation centers, either medical or recreational, within the city limits of Wooddale?
Second question. Go ahead. So right now they have to be in a special use, right? You can't totally exclude them, or?
The, the medical, originally the medical you can allow, medical you can, is in a special use, it was by a special use.
So can we just get rid of cultivation altogether, or because of the state law, we have to at least allow for special use?
I believe for medical, we'll leave it as a special use because Attorney Bond always said that it's a, we don't have to allow. For recreational, we would prohibit it. Recreational cultivation centers would be prohibited.
So the motion should be special use for cultivation center for medical and prohibited for?
Well, the other one exists, so that's not a key part of the motion, so we're just going to make a motion to not allow recreational cannabis cultivation centers within the city of Wooddale.
We agree. All in favor?
We can all say it.
Twenty second.
Okay, continue. Yeah, all in favors, we all said.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Agree with that, too. Number three.
Yeah, I'm just looking at how we're going to word that, because we're going to, we're going to follow the.
Exclusion of C3?
Yeah. Well, I think I'll make a motion to mirror the liquor license, but with exclusion for the C3 district.
So good. All in favor of that one?
Aye. I'll make a motion recommending a 1,000-foot buffer to apply around, or the, the, motion to require dispensaries to be maintained at 1,000-foot buffer around schools within the city of Wooddale.
So good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continue.
Further, I'll make a motion that onsite consumption, or consumption of cannabis onsite is not prohibited within the city of Wooddale.
Is not, is not prohibited?
Is prohibited.
Is prohibited.
Or is, is prohibited. I tried to sneak it in, you guys were paying attention. The drugs aren't what we.
You have a second on that?
Yes.
We have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, continue. That's it? How about the, 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 the C3?
That's done.
Okay. So, thank you, that's the end of the report, correct? Director?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so next is items to consider at future meetings. We have the CIT in January, coming up January 25th, and we also have the building code amendments, it's coming up February 8th. And Cyrus 1, Phase 1, special use for the PUD plant, it's coming up February 8th. And Cyrus 1, Phase 2, annexation rezoning plant, it's coming up March 14th. Do we have any other future, go ahead, Mayor?
I just have a quick letter here. I'm writing to request both the liquor license for my business, Exxon Gas Station located at 389 East Irving Park Road, Wooddale, Illinois 60191. As you know, obtaining this license has significant positive impact on a business and the surrounding community. With the liquor license, we will be able to offer our customers a wider range of options, enhance their overhaul experience, who also would be able to attract new customers who are interested in enjoying a drink with their meal after work. Moreover, the license will help our business grow and expand, creating new job opportunities. Doesn't say what they want. Do we know, we got this letter, it's just beer and wine, are there liquor, Mr. Murmurs?
Typically, we read the letter, then we have the information, and we're going to discuss what they want February 8th.
Okay, this will be at the next committee meeting.
What was the address on that?
389 East Irving Park Road.
Oh.
Yeah. Just a gas station that was just renovated, I take it, rather.
Here you go. Any other items to consider?
If not, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we re-adjourned. I'll call for order of the meeting of the Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics Committee. Take your note that the same council members are present, and I would call for approval of the minutes for December 14th, 2023, of the Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary Committee. Go to turn next motion.
I'll make one.
Second.
Any comments, questions? If they're not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One report, Police Department Interior Renovation Project Bid Release and Recommendation. And I'm going to make a motion to accept the Pacific Construction Services LLC base bid of $1,563,159. The alternate number one bid of $32,263. And the alternate number three bid of $135,694 for the Police Department Interior Renovation Project.
Second.
Chief, do you have anything onsite? Hold it. Didn't you make the motion? Or did you say, I'm not making the motion? Okay. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I got FGM Architects here for any architectural questions or project questions that I can't answer this evening. Received nine bids, Pacific Construction was the lowest qualified bidder, and we reviewed their credentials and that's our record.
Just a couple, a couple of quick questions. First question, since they didn't, nobody proposed that in the lighting, I don't remember what the purpose was for the lighting, was it, is there a negative thing to not doing the lighting at this time?
Chief?
Yeah, there was alternate bid, alternate bid number two was a special bios-type lighting. Mike want to explain a little bit more on that?
Hi, Mike Elliott, Principal at FGM Architects. So the alternate bid for the bios lighting system was a new lighting system that they've brought out some different technologies that actually works with some of the, mostly bio rhythms, and it starts to look at some of the timing and the chicanery pieces as far as the people working at different times in the day. So it was kind of a new, new item. We looked at some of the information, we put it out to some of the manufacturers to just really get an idea of what the cost would be, with little work and little effort as far as to create that, and some of the numbers didn't come through and they weren't able to provide. So we thought this was a kind of a safe way to identify what the cost was and really understand it.
Jacob?
Yeah, so if we want to add that down the line, we could always add that, correct? And once we do this renovation?
No.
Oh, you can't.
The way, the way it is put together, they could not, the manufacturers, we truly tried to put it on the manufacturers and some of those folks to, okay, here's our scope, identify a cost for us, and they could not come through with that information.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Further? Roll call, please.
Alden?
Artlors? Yes.
Alden Kurialy?
Yes.
Alden Mina?
Yes.
Alden Jacob?
Yes.
Alden Smarski?
Yes.
Alden Ames? Alden Ariwods?
Yes.
Alden Kala?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Items to be considered at future meetings, non-listed, anybody want to add something? There being none, is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Call the Public Works Committee, meeting the order of the Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary members present, to make the motion to approve the minutes for December 14th, 2023.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Recommendation number one, approval of a proposal for McDonough's demolition, the demolition of 144 West Commercial Street.
in an amount of 7,200, that would be my motion.
Second.
And I do have one question. As far as, you, we had an alternate bid to remove the slab. Won't we want to do that upfront at flexible length and?
So there's the other pavement on site there, there's the two driveway spaces, there's a parking lot which sometimes gets used for special events. So given that we're not trying to develop the property right away, we intend to use the yard and everything as long as we can. And when the plans for that area are known, it's not a problem for our public works staff to go in there and take out all the flatwork on site.
And is there any fence around the area?
There is an existing fence, but we intend to keep it placed until, once again, I know what the plans are for that area.
Okay. Thank you, and Mayor?
Wait, if we take down the building, the fence is west of the building. Because we already took it down on the east side and we use it for parking. And since we're special events between the car shows and sounds of summer, cars are going to be over there. They'll be able to use the pad to park, right?
So there is a fence on the east side of the building as well. The only area that would need to be temporary fence is the north side of the building, just that connects to the yard area. So just two panels of temporary fence would be needed. The cars for special events use the existing parking lot, that's on the east side of the building right now.
Mayor?
Do we really need that east side? I mean, I thought with the new garage and everything, all our trucks fit at the new public works building.
Director?
And they do, we just intend to use it for stockpile materials, soil, water, brakes, wood chips. Just, we have space, it's nice to use it if it's not being used for anything else. Council's not comfortable with that, and once we turn to green space, we can do that as well.
Mayor?
I'm just only asking because I know we got those nice new bins and assault dome and all that stuff.
We want to keep them clean, so we want to not use.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Alderman Kurrielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarchi?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arrie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Caroline?
Yes.
That passes. Next, replacement of city vehicle number 153-104, 201-127, and 301-11D, in a total amount not to exceed $132,064.41. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? I have one. As far as the one for public works, right now, I mean, you guys are driving a Tahoe on this. Ford Escape is a lot smaller than a Tahoe. Is there really, is, do we really, could we get away with a smaller vehicle like that for the uses that you guys use that truck for?
Yeah, that's a, that's an admin vehicle, so it's used by our Assistant Public Works Director. We do sometimes use it to pick up some materials, but in the event that we need to pick up anything large, we can send a pickup truck to get it out of the problem.
What about like in the snow and stuff? I mean, isn't a bigger SUV going to get around better in the snow?
All of our other admin vehicles are the Ford Escapes and we don't have any issues getting around time in the snow.
Okay, and then one final question. So we're doing one with the electric plug and one without the electric, one without the electric plug, one with the plug. So why are we doing one of each?
So the admin vehicle number 153, it stays here at City Hall, but there is no infrastructure to charge it. It also doesn't get used nearly as much as the other vehicle would. So we have infrastructure at Public Works to be able to use a plug hybrid, puts on there enough miles, and it's a good candidate for that type of vehicle.
Okay, thank you. Any, okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Arrie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Kurrielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarchi?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arrie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Caroline?
Yes. That passes. Items to be considered for future meetings, Elizabeth Drive Bridge, Phase 2 Engineering. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.